I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our own.
Thanks for being here this morning, everybody, for the department head meeting. Let me start by informing you that the commissioners now have officially voted to give employees who are a part of the Wayne County Health Insurance Program a premium holiday for the month of December. So, thank you all for taking care of your health and putting us in a position to be able to do that. We will not be taking a employee holiday at this time just with some of the uncertainty that there is in some of our other financial issues with tax changes and so on. We thought it'd be best to not take that employer holiday. Let's go ahead with department head reports. Any volunteers who want to start? Craig?
Yeah, I'll start.
Why not? Step up, buddy. All right. What have you up to?
All right, good morning, everybody. The Comcast Highway Project has been completed. Well, I won't say it's been completed. Comcast part's been completed.
Mike's shaking his head.
Yeah, so it's back here. It's from yours to back here. Now, we'll still have to go in, put you guys on our network, change your network. We've still got work to do there. But the actual Comcast project is finally done. Fairgrounds, I haven't heard. It's still in limbo, but at least half of that project is done. We had a storage server crap out on us last week.
Is that a technical term?
That is a technical term. Yeah. So, we had to replace that. We had the server we had on hand. I did have to buy three 20 terabyte drives, but it is back up and running now. So, that was an old file server that I am glad it's actually gone. Did not like how it went out, but glad it is gone. The router replacement's done. We now have our router working with a backup ready to go in case we run into any hardware problems with that again. So, that is good. I want to apologize to everyone because I think there was a little misunderstanding with the Windows timeout. That is a requirement from our cybersecurity insurance is for after a certain amount of time, our workstations lock. I told Doug, leave it at Windows default. I was thinking that was 10 or 15 minutes. That seems to be two. Okay, two minutes.
It's like 30 seconds.
So, all your timeouts will be changed to at least 15, but no more than a half an hour.
Okay.
And I do request that every time you do get up to go to the bathroom or whatever, please hit the Windows L and lock your computer. We're changing out the court recorder's storage drives. They were on an external regular spindle drive, and they've been up there for a few years, and they're starting to die out, so they're being replaced with SSDs. So, there's no spending parts, no nothing to go bad. A lot more reliable. I've got a lot of contracts that I'm renewing. Probably about seven of them are getting ready to be renewed going through there. Can't believe some of the skyrocketing costs that some of these are. It's insane. I think we do need to replace the UPS in the IT department, not just the batteries. I think the whole UPS is going bad. Again, it's just part of this. Our technology is becoming well over a decade old. It's been running. I think this is just, it's, you know, it's done its job, and it's tired, and then no longer wants to work.
Craig, so price increases, are you comfortable that you're 26?
I'm still able to afford them.
Okay.
And some of them I'm dropping from a three-year contract to just a single year. And that, A, that's cheaper, and it gives me time to look for alternative solutions.
Okay.
We're definitely going to be losing SOFOs. We'll have SOFOs one more year. Their product jumped up $26 per user, so I went for, there's no way I could pay almost $50,000 for three years. So, I did a one-year one, and we'll go, we'll do something else next year.
Okay.
Starting VoIP Talks, me and Dexter's going to be getting together and having these first meetings and starting to figure out a plan of what we're going to do. So, hopefully, at the beginning of the year, we can start dropping new phones down. Still dealing with the government MS365 crossover. That's another nightmare I'm dealing with. We're trying to lock down a date that we can give to IoT, so hopefully, we can, the email outage will be hours instead of days is what I'm, is what I'm trying to get it down to. But again, that's a nightmare. It's the holidays. I've got every five minutes of vendors calling me wanting to sell me something, so we're into the end of the year purchasing. All of the NFACS court displays, like the one out here, all of them, they are now, all been upgraded and in the cloud. We no longer host that server. So, that is another server off our infrastructure that we have to worry about backup, clone, secure, all of that. That is now in the cloud and completely NFACS is probably. We're still running around with the Windows 10 end of life. Doug's running around, we'll be getting surfaces and laptops and everything, and to see if they can be updated. If they cannot be updated, they will be replaced. So, I do have probably five laptops that I need to get out anyways before they get to be so old they're outdated by the time we turn them on. So, we will be doing that, and that's other than the regular day-to-day craziness in the IT department. That's all I have.
Any questions for Craig?
On the email outage?
Yeah.
Somebody sends us an email.
You will still get it.
It'll just be delayed.
Okay. So...
How long of a delay?
Well, I'm hoping that we're talking a couple hours, but it has to be precisely coordinated with IoT to get the domain verifications, because IoT usually takes one to two days to verify, and you have to verify the old domain again and then verify the new domain. So, that would be about four days of outage if we just did it normally. So, I'm trying to schedule that all into one day, and hopefully, within just a few hours, they'll be able to verify. We'll make the change, verify again, and then email will start coming in and everything, because everything's got to be exported and imported into the new tenant. So, yeah, I'm losing hair over this one.
No comment. All right, any other questions? Brandon?
Just a few things. We did get our community crossings applications submitted. Award should be notified by the end of the year. We're working on the bid documents for the Bridge 307, you know, for the community crossings. If they are awarded, we're ready to go to bid those, hopefully, January or late December, depending on when the award comes in. Today, I've got the final inspection on Bridge 701 South G Street.
Okay.
So, they've got the safety railing up, so that project is, should be completed today officially. Working on our bridge asset management plan, which is due December 1st. And even though it's not our bridge, but the bridge on Washington Road over I-70, we'll be closing for a full replacement sometime maybe this week or next week, and it will be a 180-day closure, FYI, so...
So, what, how do you mark those, Mike? Do you put up state?
Yeah, the state's closing it for their 70 project.
So, you've got a detour?
The detour, they'll, is going to go down Kepler to Jacksonburg to Moyer.
Okay, okay.
Or vice versa, so...
All right.
And that's all I've got.
Any questions for Brandon? You're going to stick around for our meeting, okay? Mike?
Daily work, been running the snow routes, got all the snow routes ran for looking for problems. Guys making notes, and then we'll start working on those issues. Still working on some mowing. I've got a whole few more weeks of mowing left to do. Painting equipment. We did have a snow rodeo, and then the winters of that will go to the state snow rodeo for next year's, depending on how we do it. Home stock to the shop. Got the last of the hot mix spots or spots hot mix that needed it before the weather turned bad. Did have our snow day before it snowed. We did have our first snow on Monday, and everything went fairly decent for that. Put some concrete and some ditch lines. Working on a lot of brush cutting, cleaning out some pipes, and finishing up shoulder work.
Questions for Mike?
This will be noticed to bidders. So, this will be for our annual bids for 2026.
Okay.
With the snow on Monday, and then we were off yesterday. Didn't have exact time to check with your schedule with Bobby, but we can change that if it doesn't work. But I have the opening for December 10th at 9:30. I didn't know if that would work in your guys' schedule.
Should be fine.
So, I've got the official one here for...
Signatures.
That would need to be signed.
Okay.
It's in there. So, this will cover the pipes, asphalt, stone. I've all borrowed usual things. I put in there, be for fuel, and then you still want the downtown fuel or the downtown vehicles. I didn't know if you still want to bid that out or not.
I think certainly this year we do, so...
Okay, it's in here.
Why we would change that?
So, it's in part of this, too. So, then it's got the pipes, stone, gravel, gasoline, diesel fuel, the hot mix, all those things, so if you guys are in agreement with them.
Okay. This is substantially the same as last year, right?
Yeah, this changed things and things like that.
Ron, do you need some time to review this, or do you want to?
No, just to bidders, it's fine.
Questions, Brad?
Nope, I moved to a room.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay. You've got a few vacancies at the moment. Do you have to reduce the number of snow routes until you get some of those replaced?
Uh, no, it's kind of hard to reduce them, or you have to redo all the maps and everything, so...
I know, that's why.
We did get a person hired. I think he started last week, and then this week, Monday, he started on his CDL training, so he does CDL training.
Oh, okay.
So, we're only down one right now. We will be down two probably here, timing up after Friday, so...
Okay. All right, well, keep us posted. Anything else for Mike? Michelle?
Morning. I was going to say, we had a really good Veterans Day parade downtown on Saturday. I don't know that we had as many entries as last year, but we still had a pretty nice turnout. We've got the food pantry November 25th at 9 o'clock at Glenn Miller Park. This last month, we did 90 boxes, and they were gone in about 20 minutes. So, people line up at about 7:30, even though we don't start until 9:00.
Michelle, who's that, who's sponsoring that? You guys are, or?
We...
Participate.
It's just the Circle U donates some from it, and then it's the veteran agencies that go down and hand out the boxes, so... Today, I'll be giving a benefits presentation to the Richmond Board of Realtors. On December 2nd at Morrison Reeves, we'll be doing the annual veterans' benefits with Joe DeVito and Cambria Sparks from IDVA. And in addition to the briefing part will be shorter, and then they will be there to do claims, intent file, answer questions about claims, whatever they need. And that's from 5:00 to 7:00 on the 2nd. And then December 6th, out at the Coleman Center, is the Veterans Holiday Dinner. They need to sign up by November 18th, and they can call our office and get information, or they can call Lisa Creach. Her number is 765-914-7367, and they do have to be signed up because there's limited, you know, they need to know how many people they're beating. And some veterans were turned away last year because they weren't on the list. So, that's all I have.
All right. Questions? If not, who's hiding behind you there, man?
I am.
Good team.
I don't know if you need these papers at this point or not. I'm asking to transfer some funds around. It should go before council. Our software provider has gone through a major restructuring, and of course, it cost us more money, and we had to have some server software upgraded and stuff this year, and now the other software bill's coming due in December, so I'd like to get this transferred over.
This will all be paid out of the GIS?
All paid out of the GIS interlokal. It's just transferring funds within...
So, we're just recommending the transfer to council for you?
Yeah.
They're going to do whatever they want to anyhow, so why do we need to make a recommendation? We kind of proved that last week, didn't we?
Yes, but I'd like to go ahead and recommend...
I'll second that motion then.
All right. We have a motion and a second to recommend approval of the transfers for GIS. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
All right.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Anything else, Gutti?
Nope, that's it.
All right. Beth, are you speaking for the Health Department today?
Yes, I am, yes. We are getting ready to roll into renewing for the food permits. We had some businesses pushing it last year, so we're hoping to get those going a little bit quicker this year. On the clinic side, we do have our new PA in, so we are able to up our offerings again. We've now included birth control pill exams in addition to all of our current testing and treatments, as well as sports physicals, some of the stuff that we had brought on before and then had to stop. So, we are continuing to push those. She's only here a couple days a week, which is good for us financially, and then we're able to do some other stuff in preparation when she's not here or when she does get in. So, things have been busy with that, and we are getting ready to prepare for the upcoming parades again. We had the RV in the parade last year. We're going to do that again this year, hoping to pick up Cambridge as well and maybe some of the other communities. If anybody has any leftover candy or wants to donate any, we would be happy to take it. I'm not above stealing your kids' Halloween candy if they don't want it.
If they don't want it?
Yeah. Or you're not going to eat it. But we're hoping to, that seems to help get some attention to, you know, we are out there and we are available, and it's a good use of the RV that usually just sits, so...
Keeps the battery charged.
There you go.
Are you guys, I think at one time, Dan said you guys were going to do the DOT physical too. Are you still not, are you not doing those?
RPA now is not certified to do the DOTs. We're going to focus on some other items.
Okay.
Bring that back.
Okay. Any other questions for Beth, from anyone? All right, Matthew?
We, on the 911 side of the House, working through our hiring process, we were extremely pleased with the response we got. We had over 60 applicants for the hiring list, so that's one of the best responses we've had in a very long time, so...
Everybody wants to work for you, Matthew.
I, well, I don't know about that, but anyway, so that's very hopeful there. Radio project moving along. We are involved right now with making sure all of the interlocal agreements are getting signed, and we're, I'd say, real close, about 85% done. We had Cambridge City Monday. I have the Barry Township Advisory Board tomorrow, and I think maybe one of the only ones left is the Webster Township Board. So, if you, I think Barry's been having you sign them as we go, but if you haven't seen some of them yet, there's going to be more coming, and it's gone extremely well. The recorder project, the new recorder for the 911 center is moving forward. We have seen the demos for all the different makes and models that we were interested in evaluating. We have three out of the four bids back from that, so once we get that fourth one, we'll kind of be evaluating those bids and the proposals and coming to you maybe for recommendation and that kind of thing, hopefully, before the end of the year is our goal with that project. Emergency management side of the House, we've got a lot of our annual year-end reports that we're in the process of completing for the state. The state completed our county readiness assessment. We are assessed every year by the Department of Homeland Security Liaison over our area. Just looking at projects, initiatives that the agency does and making sure that we're trying to move the county forward with preparedness, and we passed that with flying colors. There was no concern there at all, but at the same time, it's nice to get that reassurance from third party looking in, so... We do have our local emergency planning committee tabletop exercise on Monday for local responders. It's at noon. We'll be testing policies and procedures and responses to a chemical release using one of our fixed facilities here in the county, and I won't say anymore because it's like giving the answers to the test. So, but we're looking forward to that and providing that. And then just as a heads up, made me think with Gutti's transfer funds, I'll be coming to you. Didn't have my act together for today, but we'll be transferring some funds here at the end of the year, just a, they're all within same funds and all that kind of stuff, but just year-end balancing. One of them's due to a salary line item. We had a long-term employee retire at the first of the year and had to pay out their vacation, so then that kind of shorted that line item. We're able to cover everything ourselves, so no concerns there.
Okay.
And I believe that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Matthew? If not, Kim, what do you got?
Just that we are slated to request council to adopt the 2026 salary ordinance on the 19th at workshop, and then after that makes its way through with council, we'll post that on the portal. It then becomes a public document.
Okay.
That's it.
Are we through open enrollment?
Sorry?
Are we through open enrollment?
Yes, officially. We have people who haven't completed what you need, but yeah, but officially, we're done.
Okay. All right, any questions for Kim? Steve, anything for the group? Okay. Mark, anything from the auditor's office?
Two things for Matt. The bids that you're taking for your equipment, are they over $100,000?
Yeah.
Okay. In reference to the transfers, try to make sure that the transfers are done before the last day I pay claims.
Which is, again?
December 16th or 17th, I think, 17th.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
No, not from me.
Questions for the auditor? All right, Brad, anything?
Kim, where are we at on the policy for IDs, and have we talked to department heads now that have an older employees wear their IDs when they're at work?
There'll be a note go out this week.
This week, okay. So, you'll see that?
Yeah.
So, everybody's had the opportunity to get a new ID made or...
Thanks to Bobby.
Rock's card, okay?
Thanks, Bobby.
Thanks, Bobby.
Welcome.
Anything else?
So, it's just going to be up to you guys to enforce your employees to make sure they're wearing them during business hours.
And there are a couple of options for how they hang those, right? They can use a lanyard or a clip or...
That's all I have.
They have a choice, okay. Bobby, anything for the group? All right, then let's take a brief recess and thank you all for being here, and then we'll move to our, to our regular commissioners meeting here in just a minute or two. or two. All right. All right, let's reconvene for the regular commissioners meeting. Mike Sharp is first on the agenda. And do we have the bid opening scheduled for 9:30? So we need to put that off for a while. Okay, well, let's, let's, anything else that you have, Mike?
No.
Okay, let's go to Brandon.
Okay.
Do you, you have anything on the fairgrounds parking lot at this point?
We did meet with Joe Burns out there on the electric to get enough investment on moving the poles and then kind of giving us an alternate bid on putting the power lines under the ground and conduit. Haven't received that yet, so hopefully we'll get that this week and be able to finalize our estimates for the entire project.
Okay.
That's the only thing we're waiting on right now.
Okay. And we had, we had initially talked about following up with the driveway permit on Manning Road. And since Aaron wasn't able to be here today, we want to put that off until next week. So that'll be on the 19th, week from today. And, and we've notified the property owner, right? Otherwise he would be here. Okay, good. Anything else, Brandon?
I thought I could think of. Along the notes, I guess, of the fairgrounds, you, I know we're waiting on some more bidding, but do you want any materials ordered yet or work on that yet? Or you want to wait till we get all finalized prices?
How long is it going to take to get materials that you need?
I would hope we can get the pipes within a week, but I mean, this is quite a little bit of piping, so.
Okay.
I'm not, I haven't ordered as much piping on the plastic end of it. The last time I ordered it, it was ordered for another old project and it took like three weeks to get the...
I would say wait then.
Piping in, so.
Because I don't know what's going on out there, but we won't have it tore up and then have to wait.
Right.
So I would just wait till you get everything in and then start to work if that works for you.
Well, no, my question is, you want, you want me to order the material?
Yeah, right.
Now?
Not, not start to work, but just...
Not really start to work, but if you want the material ordered. I didn't want to order it and then you're like, okay, we're closing this project and I don't need 24, or this much 24-inch double wall plastic pipe per se.
Are you thinking you can still do it this fall?
Well, yeah, kind of looking at it before, kind of in the process, once we get the go ahead. I think we can go ahead and put the tile in, we can work on the retention pond, getting that expanded out. Whether you go with the parking lot or not, this process would be in place for future type of thing. So I'm not saying that we'll, I'm not planning on starting to cut to put the actual parking lot parts in and so forth. I think we want to get the drainage, the piping put in first.
Right.
But I know the longer we wait to get in the season, so then, depending on when we get everything back and you guys meet and decide.
I think...
Is it questionable that we're doing? I thought we've already...
I don't think so. I think the only question is whether we have to phase it beyond, beyond putting in the gravel, going to that stage and then, and then a year later or however long.
I don't have the, do you have the cost with you?
So I think we definitely need to do...
I can't remember the costing on the pipe, but I mean, if we got the thousand feet or better of piping to purchase and to put in, to me, that, you know, and the way we're doing it, it's going to be to where if you ever decide to expand the parking lot, you know, on farther south, I'm trying to make it to where it can be expanded without having to redo all the piping and so forth. But I know to get into the retention pond and start that work and some of that, that if you want to get started on it, I can get that material ordered, that will not be part of the other parking lot. Because I'm questionable whether if we start that, it may be tore up and then we can't get back to it and then we're, we're losing that parking for whatever events you have this winter per se.
Right, right. Yeah, I don't want you to do that.
But the, you know, as far as that goes, once we get the electric figured out, then we can work on the trees and so forth. So I don't really want to work on the trees, so we got the electric. But the tiling and the piping, I could go ahead and order. And then if it's at right, we could go ahead and start on the retention pond if you guys are okay with that. But I didn't want to start without...
And you've got, you've got room out there to store it if for whatever reason we don't get it done until the spring, right?
Right. Or we can put it even at the fairgrounds.
What's the, what's the approximate cost of the materials?
I don't, I can't remember. It's been a while since I got the prices.
$10,000, $50,000?
Over 10,000, I would say. I can't remember now.
I'm okay with them going ahead.
I think we're doing that, it's just a matter of timing and your schedule, so go ahead. I'd say go ahead and order.
We get it ordered and then we can start on the retention pond anyway. We've got the figures for some of that that we can go ahead and get started on with, with the weather. You know, the retention pond, when we got this drier weather, that's the best time to do that, where it's not filled with water trying to do excavation parts and stuff like that. And that's not really going to affect, and even doing some of the other things, I can check with Brad or on with Steve, you know, we're basically going to be on that, along that drive heading to the south. So most, I don't think there's a lot of things that go on in the show arena or the cattle barns, most of them's going to be up to the other end. So there may be some things in the sheep barn, but yet we're going to be kind of a spot where we're not really, the tiles that we got to place across the roadways, I'll get with Brad to make sure those can be done in a day each. I mean, we put them across the road in a day. So I mean, those type of things, I'll just coordinate with the fairgrounds to make sure they're not having any vent coming in or whatever when we close that part of it up. But I just want to make sure you guys are okay with going ahead and moving forward with that part of it.
Steve, any, any reason why they shouldn't?
I don't think so.
All right, go ahead with ordering the materials. And we'll, we'll meet again next week. You guys have anything else? Okay, we'll just wait until 9:30, right?
FYI, December 1 is our hearing date on the Waterfall Road.
Okay.
Hearing that it really doesn't happen, but then that, then that'll allow the order appointing the grazers to issue.
Okay.
So hopefully by, I got to get back to Matt Poty, but they, they have two weeks and hopefully they can get it done, get it turned around and get our money paid and get an appropriation order here that only has access.
Okay. Mike, I'm sorry, those, the streetlights out at Gateway that I'd sent you that note on, are those ours?
Yes. And typically, we've been working with Hagerstown. I do go over there a lot of times at nighttime. I don't know exactly when they go. Sometimes if I know there's a problem, I'll try to run over there, like in the morning this time of year, we can get over there before daylight.
They're sure still lit up anyway, but...
Right. In the past, we've always gotten ahold of the town of Hagerstown and kind of worked with them, then they've gone up and repaired them and then we just pay them for the fixture of those. But those are really kind of the only streetlights that we have in Wayne County.
We'd had some streetlights at the gateway go out. Okay. There was five of them that needed to look at and eat the Bowery and brought it. I didn't even realize we owned those streetlights out there, but... Okay, so you're going to have somebody look at them?
I mean, I don't own them, but we'll own the replacements, I guess.
Okay. And I'm sorry, Brandon, you started to say something?
I was going to say, since we're on Waterfall Road, I had a meeting with Endot a couple weeks ago. And because of the tight schedule with the right-of-way, they are not wanting to let the project in March with the right-of-way, with the right-of-way not being cleared, having all purchased. So they have recommended to move that to fiscal '29, which would be July of '28. But we did secure the funding that we already have, so we're just basically moving the project out.
Two years?
Two years. If we wanted to go ahead and continue on our current schedule, we would lose the construction funding for March. So with that big of a project, I felt it was necessary that we needed to keep the funding available. Now, we're still going to continue on schedule and if Endot does have funding availability between now and '28, they will let us know, we will be shovel-ready and we can do it sooner, so.
So essentially, they've taken that money and shifted it to somebody else's project for...
What's the total?
To move it up. I think it's just under $3 million total, so I don't think that's something we want to...
Is that going to, is that going to create a lot more expense in maintenance and repairs to that, to that bridge before it's replaced?
I, I don't think so. We've, we just put a new layer of asphalt on it this year, so that, that's going to be our temporary fix.
Okay.
Other than just the normal increases in construction costs, that's the only...
And we increased the plate on the north side. So we did it. It's probably been five or six years ago when we resurfaced it, maybe. I put a metal, kind of a L-shaped metal plate on one of the edge, because if you get water coming, which water does rise up in big rains, that's the latter part of this year, but, and it gets in between the asphalt and the bridge deck, that's what peels the asphalt off. So there was an approach that did not have a plate on it, so we put a plate on that. That's kind of what tore it up this last time, so we extended that plate out. So I think it should hold.
Okay.
No guarantees, but you would think it would hold.
Okay, okay.
Did we satisfy the other property owners, steelworkers?
Yes, they were, there's a little bit of confusion on where we were taking right-of-way from. And once we explained that to them, I think they voted this past Saturday, they approved it. So it's just a matter of paperwork signed and done that round.
The unknown owners are the only ones we haven't taken care of?
Correct, yep.
Okay. And that's because there are no unknown owners?
Well, it's because the process for unknown owners is much more convoluted than if you know who owns it and you can deal with them. You got to advertise. Well, I won't say anything bad about legal advertising. We have, we have, nope.
Okay. All right, Ron, let's go to you and while we're waiting for the...
First of all, I'd like to notice the bidders. I hope that it gives them a heads up to include the noncollusion affidavit, because that's about, and I think we probably have had in the past. That's an automatic...
Typically, when we send out, so we'll send out two bidders. So like this, I have a list of people that want to put bids and so forth. I send a blank copy of the noncollusion affidavit with it.
But that's about the only thing, not the only thing, but that's the major thing that we cannot waive based on an other case.
Right, right. So we, we do send them a copy when we send a bid out.
I need a copy of Soil and Water and the local draft. I went through my computer and I've never done anything but an addendum to it, because then I realize more parties do it. So that's why I was looking for something I didn't have. Have you seen it or do you have it or?
Yeah, I thought I sent it to you guys, but you and Steve, but I'll, I'll send it again.
I didn't look at my email, I just looked at my...
I'll send it again, so it was, Soil and Water submitted their draft. We, we changed some of the language and...
The irony is that, you know, you wanted to look at the structure when you started getting into this, it's kind of weird, but...
I just, I just raised the question because we don't have an interlocal between the county and Soil and Water at all.
We are Soil and Water.
Well, exactly.
That's the thing.
And so that's, that's why I was unclear on this third employee. There already are two employees in the general fund budget and, and why does the third employee trigger?
This all started after the '30s calamity of the Dust Bowl and they had federal statutes that were the pattern for state statutes. Indiana passed theirs in either '37 or '40 or a combination of two. And all 92 counties have their own, are their own Soil and Water district.
Understood.
And then the governance is under the statute that I cited.
So my, my only real question focused on this third employee, which is a shared employee. So I assume that's why we want to have an interlocal agreement. The county has not been a party to it in the past. It was WUR and since it no longer exists, they, they won't be a party to this one, so...
And I'm working on that template for insurance.
For the opioid distributions, okay, okay.
That's kind of the main things that we got.
And so you just need the VIN number for the police car that we want to transfer to Union County?
Yeah.
To complete the...
I'll, I'll go ahead and prepare a dummy resolution for asking we the counterpart resolutions.
Okay, and do, do they need to pass it first? Okay, good. All right, anything else? Any questions for Ron? Okay, Steve?
You heard obviously the presentation on the fairgrounds parking. I think, could we meet out there sometime in the next couple of days just to put some stakes down to where your proposal places that parking lot, you know, the outside perimeters of it? I know we saw that drawing, but...
I can get with Gordon and see...
So we can get a sense of...
Set some for us?
Make sure that Brad is, is pretty comfortable with that and, you know, where we're going to move the, because that did involve some moving or eliminating those pedestals for camping.
The ones that were on the existing poles that need to be moved, they are going to quote putting all that back on the new poles and the new locations.
And they're going to reuse what's out there unless it's bad.
Yeah.
And those poles will be in the...
Medium.
Okay, okay.
And then Brad was out there when we, we dig over it with Brad.
I know, I just, it's going to be pretty big space and I know, I think he's pretty comfortable with what you guys came up with, but before you start digging, I'd like to at least make sure.
Fair.
Okay.
And then Chamber project here, he is scheduled to be here on the 21st to replace and update the lighting control system here. I also did send him some, some of my thoughts after the council meeting the last time. You know, we talked last week at our, at our commission meeting that we don't like that there was some places that dropped out, whether that can be finely tuned, tuned more better to pick up with the ceiling mics or whether there's some, some places that would be appropriate for a desk mic. I still think that there are some areas that, especially when you, when you get a crowd in here where you have a lot of people and back and...
Background noise.
Noise and more people you have in here that absorb some of the sound.
And he was here when we were getting some of that feedback early on, right? And so he made adjustments to take that out?
Yeah, and he did that, plus that bigger processor helps to overcome that too, because he didn't have to turn the gain up quite as far to make, you know, the sensitivity of the mic, so.
Okay.
But we're still working on it.
So are, are we thinking that, that it will continue to be an issue and that somebody needs to be here who can make adjustments if that happens again?
Correct, that was a question I put to him. I mean, let's face it, you know, we have a variety of folks who speak into these microphones at different volume levels and I don't see how you can set it at one setting to catch all for every speaker. You know, Mike, when he talks, it's, it's very loud.
He's trying to yell over a bulldozer.
I know. He's, maybe it's his hearing or something, you know, from all the heavy equipment. But then when, you know, when Ron talks, Ron's a very soft-spoken individual.
That's because I got hearing aid.
So...
He can hear it.
Yeah, anyway, I, I still think we, we've got some issues to resolve and we'll...
Well, and then we need to figure out who is going to be at these meetings that is going to know how to make adjustments. Okay.
And the courthouse front entrance, still, that's still where RP&L's doing their work. They did get the top off that vault last week, the top that was damaged. They're having one made for that. In the meantime, the subcontractor was doing the work on the north part of the annex. They started to haul the dirt because that would be filled in with grass. They did get the concrete poured around the transformers, so they're waiting on the fence person to come in and start putting that up. the fence person to come in and start putting that up, and then you can see that they've started on some additional lighting in the annex parking lot.
You did see that?
Good. Now, on the courthouse elevator, you know, we indicated we're gonna rebid this next year, so next year it'll be coming up. Are we still, is that still our plan to, after the budget process this year, are we still in a position, you think, to rebid that?
I think we need to rebid it, I don't know whether we'd be able to do it or not.
I think at a minimum, rebid and see if we get any.
If we get a.
Get a bid, I mean, it doesn't, I mean.
And then we'll have to see, you know, is the money available? I think it will be, but.
But we, we just gotta get a bid first.
Exactly, so, but do we, have we talked with, with Kevin about timing?
Right, that, that's where I'm going with this, I just wanna, I wanna have that discussion with him, because I, you know, this is the middle of November, and next year will be here pretty, pretty quick. I think he initially thought in the late spring, remember, that's part of the discussion, so I just wanna make sure that we're still going forward with this, at least we want to bid on it, and we've not altered the, what we want to do.
This is a, is this a demolition, demolition, or do we still have to have state-approved plans and specifications?
Yeah.
For the takeout of that shed?
Yeah, yeah, it's demo and it'd be a state-approved project, yeah.
So has he done the, at least the schematic and?
Yeah, they've got it rough, but obviously, when, if, once we say go out to bids, there'll be some more definitive drawings put.
Construction drawings.
Yeah, although some of that is already in place because we did put it out for bid.
It was out for bid, and it changes, and I don't know that there are any.
Did we change the, we, we decided on the place for the mural?
Right.
To move that.
To that stairwell.
Yeah, to that stairwell, so, okay, I just wanted to make sure we're on the same page to revisit that. And then on the security entrance on the west side, still waiting on the bid specs for me and Ron to review, and I'll touch base with LWC to make sure that that's still on there, so that's moving forward.
Okay, and are, do you have thoughts on the timing of putting that out for bid?
You know, he originally talked like doing that in December, so I need to get those documents so that Ron and I can look at them, so we can get that out for bid. So if that's not December, it'll certainly be January. And that's all I have.
That's all you have, and it's still not nine thirty?
I know.
So.
You gotta come up with discussion points, Ken.
So, Ron, a question for you, and the auditor brought the proposition that we would no longer purchase the updates to the, to the Burns law books that are in his office, is that?
Been working around it, I mean, we don't take them in our office either, everything's uterized.
Okay, so, so you can, we don't.
I mean, it's handy to go out, if, you know, if you ask me a question, I, you know, I, since I don't work off the laptop, you know, I say, well, I don't know, I'll have to go out and look that up and get back to you, that's okay, but I mean, you know, as far as, I don't know what the.
The price keeps going up, what'd you say it was gonna cost?
It's every year it goes $2,000 up, you know, so.
So it's like $8,000 now?
Eight thousand this year, at least.
For one cent?
Yes.
Yeah?
Nope.
No, for the year.
I know.
Yes, I'm believing that it's every year, more and more, it just writes out.
I'd say no.
Okay, so, we're good with that, Ron doesn't need the updates?
Not for that price.
It wasn't a proposition, I've already canceled it.
Well, that was pretty much.
Okay, and then where are we at, Steve, in the process of formulating a deed sale for 2026? We're getting communication, asking you if we're gonna do one, and what's a good date, and I guess I have a question, is there were originally several properties that did not sell? And then some of the properties that did sell had to be refunded because one of the, one of the owners had declared bankruptcy? Are you in the loop on that? That, that came from your folks, so, so those properties?
No, actually, that instruction came from SRI, but I, I agree with.
Does that even keep us from selling at a deed sale? If it's, I assume it's because it's part of an asset in a bankruptcy?
Yeah, I mean, this is basically someone who I think is, it's a pattern of behavior, these property owners typically have done this, and then they'll end up including the, they have to include the delinquent taxes in their plan to get it approved, and more often than not, the plan doesn't get approved because they don't comply, so they just buy time with this, so.
Okay, but it's as if it was never in a tax sale? So it would have to go through another tax sale before it would go through a deed sale? Okay, and can they, can they do that again?
Well, there's limitations, I mean, you know, I, I've talked, I've talked to Beth about this, and I'm, I'm not sure that we need to be the knight on the horse that falls on our sword to, you know, but this is, it's abuse, it's bankruptcy abuse, there's no question about this, there's been a pattern of, by these owners, having done this at least, at least three times in the past, or two times in the past, this is the reason.
So is there, is there any action that the county needs to contemplate in response?
You'll never hear that coming from me, yes, someone needs to, but I'm not sure, you know, we have to be the one, because it's not a level playing field, the whole concept of bankruptcy is, is there for the benefit of the debtor. So to make a showing of abuse, it's a pretty, pretty high standard of proof. That being said, I think this is definitely what it is. Now, I don't practice bankruptcy law, couldn't all those years, because my partner was a trustee in bankruptcy, and we didn't get involved in Chapter 12 or 13, such as what these are, it's Chapter 12, I guess, or 13, I mean, so, I mean, I don't think it's worth our department out $10,000 or $15,000 to the law firm to challenge the, these two property owners, have them declared abusive and therefore eligible to file for whatever the period is, because it's not in, you know, it's not like they're on a, a list that they're debarred, you know?
Oh, okay, okay.
Period of disqualification, so no, I, I think we do, and we, eventually, we get them sold if they can, because if they can't, they can't make it go, then they're not.
It's gonna go back to tax sale next year.
So, and in a, in a, along with the question that Jeff raised, you know, he always called it a deed sale, could this be the certificate?
Totally different statute, we talked about that.
Correct.
Talked about that.
And so why would we not do it that way?
Well, the, you know, I mean, because we haven't.
Because there are options and.
Well, we actually were the, we were the beta, so it was a big debate of county for the, the SRIs, they tout it now, and I think they probably got the system they set up for us in place in these 50 or 60 other counties, to where, because the advantage is, they do the pre-notification prior to the deed sale, so the redemption period has expired, and so once we do the deed sale, once they pay their money, we can give them a commissioners' quick lane deed right away.
And they, whoever buys it doesn't have to wait 120 days.
It still doesn't make the title marketable for purposes of title insurance in most cases. We have a little discretion, and in fact, I even got some written guidelines from our, the underwriter that the title company I'm affiliated with uses, and that's Fidelity Family, and that's Commonwealth Lawyers, some of the big ones, and it's a lot more viable than I thought to be able to insure over a tax sale. We just basically said, you don't do it, you gotta go by title, and it gets your title quieted, but, but that's not our problem, it doesn't impede the marketability, and that seemed to be a pretty popular approach. Well, the problem we had is when we can get outside the lane and.
I know.
We need to know what checklist we need to make sure of, because what we, what we thought had happened did not happen. We had, we thought we had tax deeds for some parcels that we held out of a deed sale.
Right, right, okay.
Well, to your question then, remember, we talked, got a group that would get together and, and look at these properties that did not sell?
So we need to start that process?
We need to start it.
Now?
Sooner than later, simply because the, these entities that express interest in them usually don't tell us till the 11th hour, and then, you know, we're, they're, well, we don't want it now, and we're left holding the bag with the deed, and.
Exactly, and that's what we want to avoid.
It seemed to me that we need to set it, you gotta tell us now, this day.
A hard deadline.
And if you don't, then.
If you don't want it, it's going in the sale. Or not.
Or not, yeah.
There are some that we probably don't want to put in the sale.
Even with the certificate of purchase, we, we view the obligation to mow it and mow the grass, and then, you know, because we're treated as the purchaser, even though the redemption period hadn't run.
Okay.
Well, I've not, I've not given you a sum, I've not looked to see what these 34 properties are, they're vacant, I'm sure some of them are vacant.
And I'm sure most of them are, are vacant lots, yeah, so, well, why don't you pull your group together and start reviewing them? Okay, it is now past nine thirty, so I think we can open the bids. A bid, is there one?
Just one.
Arms aren't as long as I thought they were.
Chipper box for, this would be for '26, purchase in '26, yes.
Didn't want to pass this dangerous weapon around all the way around the table. While Ron's reviewing that, do you want to go ahead and claim his brand?
First, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the executive session dated November 5th, 2025.
I will second that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same side, motion carries.
And make a motion to approve the following claims, the regular claims dated 11/12/25, jury duty dated 11/10/25, local income tax paid 11/10/25, and that's it. We should make a motion to approve.
I will second that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same side, motion carries.
That's all I got.
Ron?
It is one bid from Southeastern Equipment Company. Pretty simple, though, I mean, all there in certain thing. quoted price 428,695, or 426,195 with trade-in. Noncollusion affidavit is there.
Okay.
We put one of the chipper boxes in for trade-in, and I figured that's probably what we'd come in at, but we probably won't trade it.
Will not trade it?
Yeah, I'm sure we'll do it again. Chipper box isn't something even at auction, it may not. Not too many people want a chipper box, per se, for their home use.
Unless they're paving their driveway. Okay, so, do you want to bring that back to us next week, or you want to take a look at it and make a decision today?
It's got a lot of specifications or.
Yeah, it's probably, since it's only bid, there are probably not a lot of choices here. I'd say you probably accepted the only thing that I will probably get from him, so under the, he really didn't put in all the specifications, Exhibit A is ours, so I would want to double-check and make sure that it would meet all those.
Why don't you take a look at it and, and bring us a recommendation next week?
Okay. So will there be a manufacturer's, like, brand on it?
Yeah, it should be, at an hour. At an hour is what it will be. But yeah, he didn't put any, he really didn't put any, his model and all that to confirm what it is, he was just gonna give us a price of, based upon our thing, but it should be at, at an hour is what it will be. That's the brand that they handle.
427, no matter what your specs.
Yeah, well, I think at 415 or 420, but, so it's a little higher, but we'll make it work. I can bring you back a recommendation next week that I have work for you guys, I can confirm what his specs are and everything.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Bobby, you got anything else?
No, sir.
Steve? Ron? Brad? Mark?
Are the minutes for the council meeting where they accepted the budget, or passed the budget, are they in a position where I can review them?
They're in your email.
Do you have it typed?
They're in your email.
Can you print a copy out for him?
Yeah.
Okay, is that what you're asking? You want a printed copy?
Yeah, 'cause I'm gonna mark them up and.
Okay, okay, we'll get you one. Anything else? If not, we're adjourned.